Good morning. I like to call the regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty five. The order, first order of business is pledge allegiance. Charles, you want please?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay. Next up, we have a presentation. I think I seen Joe Comerford, Brendan Garrity from the River Valley Transit folks. Also, service that we are utilizing here in Guilford Extra Mile. I'm not sure how familiar anybody is with that service. I think most of us up here are. Good morning, Joe and Brendan. Nice to see you.
How are you? Absolutely.
What I was hoping to do here, Peggy Lyons and I have decided to do this for both our respective boards. Because for those who are familiar or aren't familiar, this is a service that is coming to us as a result of us having secured a grant from DEEP. It's a two-year grant to subsidize the extra mile bus service, which is a point-to-point on-demand bus service that runs basically Monday through Saturday. And it was first implemented, I believe, in May of twenty twenty four.
You got it.
Yeah, I got my dates right? Thanks.
Sure did, yep.
So what I was hoping to do is to get an update from the team in terms of the utilization success and what we need to do for next steps to try to secure it on a longer-term basis. So who's gonna, who's gonna take the lead on this?
Sure, I'll start the presentation there. Yep. Can share my screen. See, send a request. All right, I think we're good to go. Yep.
Awesome. We don't have the screen yet. Karen?
There we go.
Ah, here we go.
Excellent. Oh, let me see.
All right, yeah. Is everyone wanna sort of turn around or take chairs on the side so you can see this? Or if you're not interested in it?
I'll just sit here and smart.
All right, one sec. I have it right here. Screen one. There we go. Did everybody see the presentation fully now?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Excellent. Excellent. Well, thank you again, Matt and the rest of the board for allowing us to present today and give an update about where Extra Mile is. And it's sort of year-one review. We started, as Matt mentioned, in May twenty twenty four. So I think it'd be a good time to kind of look back and see how we've done in this year and how we're doing in year two. So thank you again for the opportunity to speak. Absolutely. So presentation agenda, we're just gonna go over kind of who we are for folks who aren't familiar. An overview of our service, some information about Extra Mile overall in general. Then some more detailed information about your service in Madison and Guilford, as well as Extra Mile ridership review for the year, as well as the future of Extra Mile in Madison and Guilford. As Matt mentioned, there's some, there's, I also just quickly get some background noise here. Just one sec. Let's see. Okay. Anyway, so. Sorry about that. No, we're good to go. Sorry, I just had to deal with some background noise real quick. So, all right, so we're good to go? All right, so a little bit more. So my name is Brendan Garrity. I'm a transportation planner for River Valley Transit. And Joe Comerford is also here as well, and he's our executive director of River Valley Transit. So we're very happy to be here today, talk a little bit more about Extra Mile. So who we are, right? So for folks who aren't as familiar, we don't have a lot, we don't operate any service besides the Extra Mile in Guilford. So we thought it'd be a good idea to just give you a quick overview of who we are. We're the public transportation provider for Middlesex County, so we primarily operate in Middlesex County. We also used to be, you might have seen Nine Town Transit around, you know, Madison and that kind of area. We've recently merged with Middletown and Nine Town to become this new merged brand, River Valley Transit. So that's who we are. We operate thirteen fixed route buses, and the closest of which to you would be the six forty-one and six forty-five, which connect in Madison. We actually transfer with the two oh one bus route that does run through Guilford. So there's a little bit of connection there. We have many destinations throughout, you know, including apparently Middlesex County, but also New London, Meriden. And we transfer to other places that go to Hartford and New Haven. We also have other services besides your traditional fixed route buses that you see on the screen. We also have dollar ride service, ADA paratransit service, and of course, most importantly today, Extra Mile on-demand service, which we'll delve into. But again, I'd like to also show kind of the scope of our map. This is our service area, right? So this is kind of what you can see. And then on the bottom there, you can see Guilford. So we're definitely, you know, right, right next door. So we're definitely figured. That's why, you know, when we're looking at Madison, Guilford has potential locations for Extra Mile. It made sense because you guys are right next door and, you know, it seemed like it was a good partnership between Madison and Guilford to work together on this. So what, what is Extra Mile, right? So Extra Mile, as Matt mentioned, is an on-demand shuttle service. So it operates very similarly to a public transit Uber or Lyft is kind of the fast way to talk about the quick elevator pitch. But it works, it requires request the ride through an app or a phone. So they can either book through a smartphone app, which is free, or they can also call in, which is also free. So we recommend people call it. I mean, use the app, but people can also call in if they don't have a smartphone or aren't as comfortable with a smartphone. Drivers come and pick people up. So as Matt also mentioned, it's point-to-point, right? So we'll pick you up, you know, wherever you are and drop you off, you know, at certain locations. So it's definitely a very good service where it is truly point-to-point. So you get to A to B efficiently. It's also a shared ride, right? So it's not just necessarily you on the right. It might also be someone else. So for example, you know, if you're heading from Guilford, let's say you're trying to get to the Madison train station, for example, it might also pick someone else along the way and then drop you off and then that person off. So it will kind of be smart in that way. So it'll be efficient picking people off. But there are certain limits to make sure that someone isn't on the bus for too long. But if it's efficient, it will pick someone up and move them around. And again, it's available to the general public. So I can use, anybody here can use it. There's no restriction on who can use it. There's no qualifications, no application. You can download the app right now and book a ride today if you want to. So that's a nice thing, too. All right. So how to request the ride, right? So the picture on the right there is actually kind of a screenshot of our app, what it looks like. So if anybody's used Uber or Lyft, it's very similar to that, right? You type in your destination, the picture shown is our extra mile zone in Middletown. But you can type in where you want to go and it'll actually, you know, it'll kind of lock you and it'll get you into nearer stop where you can go, which is, which is excellent. Again, that app is definitely the best experience. You can see when the bus is coming. You can see real-time information about rides. You actually see the bus on the map, which is pretty cool coming towards you. So you have really good information about that. When you're calling, we'll book a ride for you and we'll also shoot you texts when we're approaching, when the bus is leaving for you. And then when it's getting close, you'll also get texts as well. So it'll update you to make sure you're aware of when the bus is gonna be there. And again, we obviously do recommend people use the app and most people are using the app. But again, if folks don't have smartphones or they just prefer, for whatever reason, to call, they can also call as well. A little bit more about the information, right? So again, it is Madison and Guilford, right? Which is great. So and what's important to know that you could actually travel between towns. And we're actually seeing a lot of crosstown travel, which is great. So we're seeing folks from Madison go to Guilford and folks from Guilford go to Madison. I'll actually have some data on that in just a second. The fare is a dollar seventy-five one-way, so thrifting round trip. Again, a pretty reasonable fare. I think if you look at other Ubers or Lifts or taxi services, again, so you could go from the tip of Guilford to the bottom of Madison, it's still a dollar seventy-five. It's the same fare, whether you're going five feet or whether you're going, you know, a couple of miles. So it's, that's nice there. Cash is definitely certainly the way people will pay. We have exact change. We don't have any ability to make change on the bus. So you want to come in with a dollar seventy-five if possible. The also on the app, another benefit of the app is that you can actually book, or you can attach a credit or debit card to the, to the app. Now you can just pay in the app, but it'll charge, just like a, again, like an Uber or Lyft kind of thing. So if folks want to use a credit and debit, that's a good way to do that. And then, as Matt mentioned, our service hours from Monday through Saturday, six AM to seven PM, and then Saturday, seven thirty AM to six PM. So no Sunday service currently, none of our extra mile zones have Sunday service at the moment. But again, some good coverage through most of the week there and a bit of the weekend. So a little bit more about the detail, right? So how did this all come to be, right? So this was a collaboration between Guilford and Madison. When we were, so initially there was funding from DOT to look at a state pilot across the entire city of Connecticut. They wanted to see a bunch of different microtransits, what we call so Extra Mile, the on-demand service is called microtransit. That's like the term for it. They wanted to see a bunch of microtransit zones across Connecticut, to see how they worked in rural areas, suburban areas, and even urban areas. And luckily, before this, we had one zone, right? So we already had some existing microtransit in Old Saybrook, Westbrook and Essex. And when they asked for this opportunity for funding, we applied for three different zones because they wanted urban. So we gave Middletown. We wanted rural, so we gave East Hampton. We wanted suburban, so we gave you guys Madison and Guilford. And lucky enough, we got funding for all three for a two-year pilot, which is really exciting. So we're already past year one or already into year two, which I'll talk a bit more about later. But it's been very successful, which I'll talk about in a second. But again, it's, it's again curb-to-curb. It's also all the wheelchairs, all vehicles, excuse me, are wheelchair accessible. So there's no mobility restrictions. We can, our drivers and vehicles are equipped to handle wheelchairs. And then again, what's also kind of cool is we've worked very quickly with you guys on a Guilford senior center kind of connection where they can actually book rides themselves. So as you probably well know, that the Guilford seniors that obviously books a lot of rides for the day for, for your residents. And what this service allows you to do and what they can do is if there's overflow or you want to focus on local rides that we can cover, but maybe, so we can't go beyond our zone of Madison and Guilford. But obviously, the Guilford Senior Center often goes beyond that zone. So for those trips, you guys can keep, you know, doing those and that's all great. But where we can help you guys, that where you, where you've used us in the past and in the present is for local trips, right? So if you're, if there's some overflow or you need a couple of trips here, we can kind of help fill that gap throughout the day for the senior center. So it seems like it's been, it's been well-used. That's great. So we'd love to see that. And we have the same program also set with Madison, and they're also taking advantage of that service. So it's a great way to kind of, you know, help if someone's sick, if a driver's sick or if there's some, you know, if there's a little bit of overflow for a day, we can help assist in that area and we have that, which is, which is cool. So a bit more about the data, right? So looking at the data here, this is just year ones. We've gone beyond year one. So I'll talk about the data because it's gotten even better since these numbers. But this is sort of a year-one snapshot, right? So you can see this zone was a very clear ridership increase month for month. It's, it's a very nice-looking graph. It just keeps going up. And overall, we hit over thirteen thousand rides in our first year, which is excellent. And currently, we're averaging between ninety to one hundred and ten a day, which is again, really, really strong. So we're very happy to see those, those initial numbers and they're continuing to grow. I also like these graphs. These are, it's a lot going on, I know. But this is sort of a look at the origin and destination map. This is the origins, right? So these dots are showing where trips are originating from. So where people booking, trying to book, you know, where are they starting from, right? And so just you can see a little idea and these little lines are where they're going. So it's just kind of a cool little visual to kind of get a fixed feel for where rides are being taken. And as you can see, obviously, the center, you know, is in the Boston Post corridor. But as you can also see, there's plenty of rides above it in the, in center, in the center of both towns and even some of the north. So part of the, the benefit of this program is that you can actually help connect people up in the central and northern parts of town that have never had transit before, right? Because there is some, there's, there's the two oh one bus that goes through Boston Post Road. But if you're from those areas, you had no way to connect to those and nowhere to connect downtown without a car. So it's a nice way to actually connect people from even in-between cities, in-between towns, but also up and down the towns themselves. So that's, I think that's a good, been a good benefit. And then this is just kind of the same thing in reverse. These are the destinations. These are where people are going, right? So this is the, these are the final locations. That makes sense. And I have a little bit more information, just some of the, just to get you guys an idea, right? These are probably aren't surprises. These are some of the things we're seeing heavy ridership in. You know, the Shoreline Plaza, of course, the Big Y, the new Target coming in, that's gonna even grow right from the new Targets. That's excellent to see. Light House Square, CVS, Guilford Commons for sure, the Walgreens, West River Village, the library, which is good to see, is what people are using the library, Red Roof Inn and Sosa Senior Living. So getting a nice kind of, kind of break. Again, there's more locations too, of course. These are some of the highest ridership locations we're seeing that are, you know, keep, keep popping up. So it's good to see that, you know, no, no major surprises here, right? You're looking at, you know, denser living spaces and then also some shopping centers so that that, that makes sense. But just cool to see what's being used around town. So I'm gonna go a little more into, into the data here. So this, I find this interesting, at least it's myself, I do. These are, these are different trips of origin and destination between the towns. So what I mean is in that first line marks is thirty-one percent trips of Madison, origin and destination. That means thirty-one percent of the trips start and end in Madison, right? Because you can go two zones. This is, this is saying that's the case. The second line saying trips that start in Madison and end in Guilford. So basically fifteen percent of the rides, people from Madison are trying to get into Guilford. And then in reverse, fourteen percent are starting in Guilford, trying to get to Madison. So as you can see, they're very close, right? So you guys actually have a little, little more people kind of trying to come to Guilford. But they're very close. So you can see that people are using the, about thirty percent of people are trying to get from one town to the other, which is pretty cool. And then a big chunk, forty percent are actually staying in Guilford. They're starting and ending in Guilford. So you guys are definitely doing very well in terms of ridership. But, you know, but Madison's close as well. So you can see there is actually a pretty good semi-like nature that people are both going to and from Guilford. So that's kind of nice to see. So you guys are actually pretty even on the data overall. And then there you go. There's some more information. This is, this is year one. It's since changed a little bit, but that's, this is year one data. So again, you know, almost seventy percent of the trips either start or end in Guilford, which is again, a good sign. That's good, as you can see. So what do we expect for year two, right? We're already a couple of months into year two, which is great. So, you know, up until this point, we have funding until May twenty eighth, you know, roughly the end of May twenty twenty-six. We'll see what happens there. And our estimated, we did thirteen thousand last, last year. Our guess is it's twenty thousand in this year. I think that's, that's, that was a no-growth scenario. So that was with no estimated growth. So I think we'll definitely be beyond that. But that's just a very, very conservative estimate for year two. And again, this is, this is the data to, so far for year two, and it's, it's exploded. So as you can see, we ended in June, which was seventeen seventy-one. In the last three months, we've gone to twenty-one eighty-six, then to twenty-five eighteen, and then to twenty-fourty-one, which is great. So we've really seen a big jump actually over the summer, which is great to see. You know, it could be a bit of a cooling off in the winter, right, as the weather changes, but, but still, we've had a great summer. We're really, as you can see, there's a big jump in the summer, which is awesome. So it's already, it was already strong and it just got stronger. So we hope to continue this trend as the, as the, you know, months go on. So again, that's sort of, we're very excited with, with the year-one ridership and even, even stronger year two. Which is right in July, just recently was our best month ever with twenty-five hundred rides, which is excellent. The elephant in the room is that, you know, the funding after year two is still uncertain, right? So there's potential for, and this is a two-year state pilot. There is potential for additional optional funding years. So we're hopeful that if there's money out there, we'll be very, I think we'll be very competitive. This is one of the best zones. It's been, this has been statewide, right? It's probably nine to ten different zones that have started from this. And I think you guys are definitely one of the most competitive by far, definitely one of the best. So we're hopefully, if there is funding out there, there will be some money to continue it. I know that, you know, I know that people are doing a great job, though, also promoting it and talking to, you know, legislators and making sure that, you know, there is some interest in, in funding. And I know that, I think I've heard from the state that there are, they do like the results from a lot of these zones. So we're, I think we're cautiously optimistic there will be funding. But obviously, you never know. So that's just something that we want to be, you know, transparent with and the fact that we'll, we'll obviously be fighting for it. We know that the towns have been fighting for it, which is excellent. So, you know, but overall, it's been great. So we would like to continue this program because it legitimately is doing quite well here. So we'd like to continue that program going forward wherever we can. But with that, I will definitely, I can answer, open up for any questions that me and Joe can answer. But again, I do want to appreciate, I really appreciate the time for telling you about the program today.
Great. Brendan, thank you very much for that presentation and Joe as well. I have got a couple of quick ones before.
Absolutely.
I open it up for my peers. One of the things that I'm hearing anecdotally is that a lot of our teenagers have started to utilize the service. Is there any way you can do breakdowns in terms of age that? Yeah.
Good, good question. So we don't ask for age, you know what I mean, for, for privacy, privacy reasons and all that. But what, what we can do, though, if you'd like to know, like, the ridership from the high school, something like that, we can do that. So if, if there are certain locations, you would, you'd think that it would be from stu-, from students, we could definitely look at that. In fact, we have seen both from the high school itself, but also we often see it, you know, with like picking up people at McDonald's or Starbucks trips. So we, you know, we do see lots of trips that we think are, are students. Again, we don't know exactly. We don't, we don't collect age data, age-based data.
Well, we do have the ability to, in, within our app, we have the ability to put like pop-ups or announcements that we could potentially. One thing we've talked about is come up with a survey. And so we can utilize the app to, to publish that and get, try and get people to fill it out. That's the best way we could find out better demographic information is to do a survey and ask.
Great. Thanks, Joe. This is just a commentary. When you guys first rolled out the service, Joe, I think you know this story. I signed up and utilized the ride within the first, first month. And I was able to, I was able to, without asking my kids, down, easily download the app, get it on there. But more importantly, what I did was I called your help desk, all right? Just to see what the process was like. Can you give me some help with the app? Can you give me some help with this kind of stuff? And the, and, and the response I got and the service I got was phenomenal. Because what I was concerned about was a significant portion of our population, we would anticipate utilizing this, would need some help getting the app loaded and figuring out how to use the services. So just a commentary on how well you built out your, your help desk functionality, so.
It's always great to hear. It is, it is designed to be pretty easy, but yes, some people do need some assistance. And, and we're certainly, because we run ADA paratransit, DRI, which are more geared towards people with disabilities and seniors, our staff are very used to, you know, giving people some extra assistance and especially dealing with people. Yeah. Yeah, we need that little extra help.
And one last comment for me before I open it. Joe, I think I mentioned this to you, that we were gonna be working at the Connecticut Council Municipalities to get extended funding as a legislative priority in our upcoming legislative agenda. So I can happily report that it is part of our legislative agenda to continue funding, continue and expand funding for these, for these types of services solely.
That's great. Excellent.
Several questions. I'm interested in, and you kind of answered this when you answered Matt's first question. I'm interested in who's using it and why. So I, I support the idea of doing some kind of a pop-up survey. But I'm, I'm wondering about if it's cutting into our senior, because we provide the service for the seniors similar, similar with the van with the Lyft. And I'm wondering if, I mean, if there's some synergy or if it's affecting that.
It's more synergistic synergy than it is cutting into it. Because remember, the rides for Guilford seniors are free. So this is a paid-for service. You also saw the hours. We're, we're only open during classic business, you know, town business hours, eight thirty to four thirty. So it's picking up. And then we have offered no service on the weekends. We've not seen a drop, but I think one of the things that Brendan mentioned was when there are, when we have drivers who are sick or out and we, and we have a shortage, this is, this, this service is a wonderful pickup.
Yeah, we're, so just, even if you're fully booked for the day, you guys will go in and your staff at the senior center have, are able to log into our software. And they're able to book a trip just like one of our staff can book. So they will book for your customers if they need to for, like, so any of the situations Matt mentioned. They can go and do that. And the way they've got it set up is that then the fare gets just billed to the town instead of the person paying. So this person still does not pay.
All right. Seven, the seven PM ending time. I'm just wondering why that is, if maybe you chose not to get into the impaired driver business? Because that's one obvious thing that, you know, that I thought of when I saw this, is that this is helpful for people who shouldn't be driving home. Was that part of your thinking or is there just not enough demand after seven PM to be worth?
It's, it's demand. From our experience in other zones, it's just, there's not a lot of demand after, even after like six, the man.
Yeah, five, six.
Yeah.
That's just low, yeah.
Thank you. And then one more. I'm, I've always been interested in the fixed route concept, which is, I think, how you're doing it in some of the other shoreline towns where there's like a loop and people know pretty much where, where to wait and to hop on the loop. This, the, the maps showing the destinations really kind of supported that, I thought. So that's, at the end of the pilot, I wonder if that's data that you can look at and see if something like that might be sensible for us.
It's definitely, definitely a good, you know, a good question, a good thought. And, and I know currently the fixed route, the fixed route bus goes from New Haven, I believe, to Madison, right? It's that two oh one connection, but just along the Boston Post Road. I think that one, one thing, though, that we've, we also work with Madison on this because they were also interested in a route that goes north to south, seventy-nine eighty-one, I believe, is what they're looking at. And unfortunately, what we've found out, though, is that through, through this data actually supports that. There's actually a lot of demand kind of everywhere throughout the towns, which makes a fixed route harder because when you run one bus route up a route, you know, if someone's three miles away, they're not gonna walk the bus route, right? But here, you can get everybody. So everybody in the town can still have access to it and collect it. But definitely is a good thought because, you know, fixed truck can work great in some areas. I think in, you're in particular, where it becomes more rural and less dense as you go further central and north, I think it'd be harder to effectively serve everybody or a lot of people up there with a fixed route. But this service actually does allow you to effectively serve everybody up there, which is something. I know that Matt had the same questions too, because they were also looking at a, at a bus route. And I think they've realized that because of the spread, they've seen destinations and origins, they actually, you know, are, are enjoying this. But it's a, it's a great, it's a great question. It's a great, great thought.
Just a quick comment. This services can provide a, a, a good link for folks to get to the traditional fixed route providers.
Great point.
Which is, which is Connecticut Transit. And we're sort of, we're sort of in no man's land, all right? The River Valley Transit, as you heard, serves up to Madison. Guilford at one point had been part of the Greater New Haven Transit Authority, which offers very similar services to what, what Extra Mile does and also the fixed routes. Then it was, this has got to be fifteen or twenty years ago when they built out the senior ridership program and started procuring those buses that the, we, we dropped out of the Greater New Haven Transit Authority. So this is, I think, an opportunity, a longer-term opportunity to see whether or not we want to continue to grow with the River Valley Transit or do we supplement it with some, some stuff with Greater New Haven Transit Authority? One of the reasons Greater New Haven Transit Authority might be attractive is for a lot of the medical appointments getting into New Haven. But again, this is, this, that, that's phase two or phase three at this point. Anyone else? Questions? Brendan and Joe, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We'll be, we'll be in touch.
That was good. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you for indulging on it. It was important. We made commitments, both Peggy and I had made commitments to, and create awareness and hopefully drive support through our legislative teams. So anyway, we've got one item we need to add to the agenda, and that is legal notice for the town of Guilford for a special town meeting for October sixth, twenty twenty-five for except for, say, five temporary construction easements for the Falcon Road project over, under, and across portions of several properties. Is there a motion to add that as item seven dot two? We'll, we'll add it to Janus's section. So, in a second. Let me try your mind, Secretary Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Okay, item three, public forum. Anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? Deb, come on up.
Morning. Debbie De Niusis, eighteen Sugarloaf Road. Um, so actually, my notice of this happened the day of Porch Fest. So with the, with what has gone on the last week, I feel like it's even more important that I need to address it. I was downtown with my, with my daughter and she has a double carriage. I have a single carriage. We were walking from cilantros across to the green. And what I noticed was, and I just wrote something down. So in light of the increased activism and personal space incursions on the Guilford Green, where the Guilford Peace Alliance normally stands quietly, has the Board of Selectmen considered increasing the restrictions on that activity on Saturdays? And my thoughts were, I've been here forty-five, well, it's gonna be forty-five years. And I've seen the peace alliance there and they're always very respectful, accountable and thoughtful and not kind of in your face and yelling. And lately, I've been noting that it has become more of a protest or an activism. I saw someone dressed as, I guess, in the handmade tail costume. And that symbolizes protest against the oppression of women's rights, rights and reproductive rights and autonomy. I understand that we have freedom of speech, which we, we saw this week was a very terrible thing happened. So I'm not going against freedom of speech. I'm just asking what, what the permit is for, for the peace alliance? Are we expecting to have people with signs in your faces when you walk by? To what extent is the town, you know, is there a permit for this? Is, you know, I, I, it just, it was, it's just getting to the point where I, I almost was sad that I didn't take pictures of the signs. You know, I don't know if there were any signs that said fascism or any words that have been in question lately. So I, I really, really wanted to bring that up. And the other thing was that Porch Fest, I thought, was supposed to be, and it was. I mean, like ninety-five, ninety-nine percent of it was, you visited a porch and they played music and you were able to enjoy that. But I've also noticed that when I was walking by. But I've also noticed that when I was walking by the marketplace, um, there was a table and it was um the Green Party. And it was an outreach um at the Guilford Porch Fest. And I'd like to know how that comes into play. Now, I did take a picture off the internet, and he was strumming a ukulele, but he literally was not playing music. Um, and I just wonder how, you know, all this comes into play with porch. So those were just some things that even more so with what happened this past week uh with the assassination of Charlie Kirk that um I feel is bothersome. And I do have an eleven year old granddaughter. And she said to my daughter, I really want Pa to take the Trump sign off his car because I'm afraid something's going to happen to him. So people are not talking anymore and, you know, it is a very divided pa- town. It has been a divided town now for a few years, and I, I just hope that it doesn't go down a path that we can't return from. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Deb, as you know, we typically don't respond to.
No, 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 I know.
But I would love to just have a conversation with you. There are, you touched on a couple of issues that I think you would perhaps benefit from some clarification.
Okay.
Appreciate the comments you made relative to the constitutionally protected rights to uh assembly and free speech.
Definitely.
And um, this board has not infringed on that. So I will, I will answer one question. We do not permit the peace alliance. That is, uh, as determined by Town Council, that is constitutionally protected free speech. So uh, we can, we'll talk a little bit more.
Okay.
Anyone else in public forum? Hearing none. Uh, let's move on to uh item four, approval minutes. Four dot one, uh, removed from the table and approved the minutes for the August eighteenth, twenty twenty five regular meeting. Is there a motion? Okay. Any comments, questions, uh? Suggested changes?
Yeah, I, I think so. And I apologize, I should have brought this up when we got these at the end of last week. The reason that we tabled these was that the members listed should be the selectmen, right? That's all that's required to be here. And um, I'm sorry I didn't make that clear when we talked about it last time, and I appreciate what Karen's doing with the minutes. I know it's not easy to keep, keep all this, reduce it all to writing, but I think that needs to be corrected. So the members will be just the selectmen.
All right, um. Do you want to make that correction with this one? Uh, change them? Members would not include uh Peter Barrett. Uh, um.
You know, there's others there, so.
And Darlene.
Darlene, Mary Jane, Karen.
All right. So.
I'm sorry.
That was fine. This one. Um, all right, um, any other comments? All right, uh, anything else? Take your time.
I don't think so, none of that.
And again, one of the things, this was an amalgamation of a couple of folks trying to put together the same set of minutes.
Yeah, I know. I I appreciate that.
Is it, what else in there are the members? I don't think so.
Still no on that one.
Paper copy, we use it.
No, I'm, oh, I'm all set.
I'm all set.
I'm sorry. I just, yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to um uh approve the minutes uh as amended by uh Sue's recommendation?
So, second.
Answer. Move that second in. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds, Secretary Federici.
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Um, next up would be four dot two, September second, twenty twenty five, regular meeting. Um, and we have the same uh, same concern there, I believe, right?
Yes.
Um, so we would move uh Mary Jane uh to uh guests.
And Mitch.
And Mitch, that's right, Mitch is there, yeah. All right, um, anything further?
My other thought, and again, not of substance, but the actual votes are not always documented. Mannequinist votes are the situations where somebody abstained or in the one situation where I voted, I was opposed to something.
That wasn't noted?
It's, that's noted, that the vote itself, I guess you could make the assumption that everybody else voted in favor of it, but it does, it's not stated and I mean, I think that's in purpose of the minutes, document the votes, so.
Yeah, that's my, I apologize. I'm still sort of parsing my way through onboard and trying to wear a lot of different hats, so I missed that, so I apologize. I'll correct it.
Yeah, no, I'm well aware of that, Karen. Thank you. I'm not, I don't mean to seem critical, but.
No, let me just clean it up. Yeah. Just elaborate.
Yeah.
Good. And the good news is uh Tracy's replacement starts on the twenty ninth of this month, so it will no longer be Karen's uh uh problem.
It's good news for Karen, yes.
All right, anything further on the minutes? So as corrected, um, is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Uh, second. Further comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds, uh, Secretary Federici.
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Okay, um, item five, uh, Finance Director Mary Jane Malavacy, five dot one. Received with a report from the Finance Director, MJ.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, so I'm reporting today through August, um, two months into the new fiscal year. Uh, revenues are doing fairly well. We are at um fifty percent, specifically when we look at tax collection. Um, we like that number to be over the fifty percent, um, which is showing that our revenues are are coming in um to cover our, our expenses for the first half of the year. Um, the other item I wanted to um just touch on is the golf course. And we are almost forty percent um collected for the year. Just wanted to remind the folks that um the golf course did close September first um for renovations to the tee boxes. Um, we do anticipate the potential of two months of revenue loss um because of that. Um, but on the expenditure side, we, we only have essential staff for maintenance issues um currently on staff. Um, so that's helping on the expense side. Otherwise, if you have any other specific questions on revenue, I'll take them at this time.
Anybody have anything? Revenues? Nope. All right, expenses?
Also, on the expenditure side, um, we are tracking um as we are usually each year, um, we're at about twenty three um percent spent. Many of the departments that are over the sixteen point six percent through August are due to annual service contracts and payments that go out at the beginning of the year. Things like um I T, insurances, um, other service contracts for, for different um departments. So that's uh the reason some of those are higher. Um, obviously, human services is almost at a hundred percent, because we um, we try to get those out as soon as possible. Uh, debt principle is overdrawn because we do apply premium credits to that. So as soon as all of our debt payments are paid for the year, we'll be covering that um from money we have set aside for that purpose. Otherwise, I'll take questions on expenses.
With questions on expenses at this point? Hopefully, you get a few more this evening, right?
We'll see. The fun is yet to come on the next item, but.
All right.
I also have, I have the medical report um through August. Um, first thing I wanted to note that we did have a correction um in July, which brought those claims down um from what we reported last month. Um, on catastrophic claims, uh, we are already almost five hundred thousand um over the eighty seven point five, which is um where we are halfway through our covered um by I S L for a hundred and seventy five thousand. Uh, we do have three covered members so far and one member over the hundred and seventy five thousand dollar cap. Last year, we were at six members with two people over that cap, but we were at a lower stop loss um amount, which uh we talked about at the last meeting. So that um makes up for that difference. Overall, if you come all the way down to the bottom, I'm actually projecting a pretty decent surplus um at this time. We do um still have an overpayment from the Board of Ed for a couple of months. So if you um take out all of those adjustments, our projected um surplus is about six hundred eighty six thousand dollars. Um, but at the moment, I'm showing a one, one and a half months of uh fund balance, which is our goal is three. Um, we're hoping uh that the way we have budgeted for this year will allow us to bring that fund balance back up. Again, as we always say, the first few months of the year, our claims are a little lower because our employees right now are covering their own deductibles. As those deductibles for them are satisfied, the town will begin to pick up more um through the second half of the year.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, just to clarify, Mary Jane, but projected surplus, that includes the use of fund balance.
Yes, it does. That already takes the fund balance out of the, out of the um picture. Yes.
Take the, out of the picture, so.
It's already, as if we've spent it. Yep. You can see at the top, I have.
It's net of.
It's net of, yes.
So you're saying we're six fifty to the good because we're using the seven fifty or ignoring seven fifty?
That is reduced, we're, that's already reducing the fund balance by an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand. It's as if we've spent that money. If you look up in the top in expenditures, I show the seven fifty coming out.
I do, I do see it, yeah. But that's, and that's why I'm questioning, so the, the projected surplus for the year of seven hundred and thirty five thousand in the section at the bottom, that's because. I see. Okay, thank you. I got it. I got it.
Good. Anything further on the medical? Hearing none. All right, uh, you want to move on to uh? Excuse me, uh, five dot two? And please.
Uh, yeah, so we, uh.
Go ahead, MJ.
Okay, um, so I have um two types of transfers for fiscal year twenty five. Um, one is moving money around within the operating budget itself, and the other is using um committed fund balance for those items that we've been talking about throughout the year. Um, so I'd actually like to start with the committed fund balance transfers, which is the second page um in your packet. Um, we do have the use of one point oh six eight million um of fund balance to cover items that we um did in twenty five, where there was money already set aside for that. Um, hundred and twenty four thousand in technology, five hundred and fifty five thousand in facilities, five thousand in road projects, three thousand in safe streets, a hundred and ninety eight thousand in planning, um, and a hundred and eighty one thousand um in retirement sick leave. We had a, a, a number of employees leave during the year. So I am looking for a transfer from those committed fund balance balances into the general fund to cover those expenses. That's the first part um of our transfers.
Questions?
No, very helpful.
Good. So you got your mind to something?
No, 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 I'm fine. So it, it looks like roughly the facility, the, I'll say the pa- capital type, construction type projects are coming, kind of roughly coming from the committed fund balance for facility projects and roads. Does it kind of?
Correct, yeah. Specifically, five ninety five New England Road, um, the money we set aside in facility projects included that prod, that portion of the project that was in town.
Okay, all right, all right.
So the, these are all projects that we were uh aware of um while we were putting money away, and, and that's why we're using the money now.
Okay. All right. That makes sense. Okay.
All right, um, you want us to act on that now, MJ? Do it separately?
Uh, sure, then we can just move on to the next one.
Sure. All right, so is there a motion to make the operating budget transfers as detailed in the memorandum from uh our Finance Director?
For the one million oh sixty eight.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds, Secretary Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room? Aye, aye. Motion carries.
All right, the bottom part of that page um is the reverse. We have some items that um were budgeted in capital and operating areas that were not spent, and Department Heads has, have made a request to carry those items forward into the new year, and they are outlined there um for a total of three hundred and sixty five thousand dollars.
Questions? I had none. Anybody else? No, good. All right, is there a motion uh to make the uh transfers as designated on the memorandum, uh, which totals three hundred and sixty five thousand, one hundred and sixty five dollars?
Oh, move.
Second.
Second.
Uh, any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds, Secretary Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Anything further, MJ?
Uh, yeah, and my one last one, operating budget transfers. Um, this is uh just uh making the balance, the each department whole, um, moving money from departments that have surplus left at the end of the year and transferring those balances um to uh departments that aren't in a deficit for the year. So literally just moving our current budget around um so that none of the departments are overdrawn. So those total six hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and forty seven dollars.
And anyone have any questions on the specifics on those? There's detail. So MJ, just to, just to talk to those who may be watching online or in the room or unaware of this. This is a typical process we do every year, uh, because I think as you've used the term and I've used it, budgeting is an art, not a science. And there are things that happen throughout the year that require, that wind up with uh either deficit or surplus positions in a significant number of our uh budgetary line items, and particularly those that are over. We need to find ways to cover those costs, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, yes, we are, are not allowed to move forward with our, with our audit, um, with departments that are overdrawn, so we're able to do this. I will note that um some of the departments that have larger surplus items um were due to um personnel issues where it, personnel changes, where, you know, specifically like the Assessor Department, we went from a staff of four down to three. We had a significant savings there. Um, so those are the types of reasons that we have surplus um in some of the departments.
Excellent. Any further, any questions for MJ? Hearing none, uh, let me try your minds, uh, oh, no, I need a motion then first, sorry, motion.
Some will.
In a second. Uh, any further comments or questions? Uh, let me try your minds, Secretary Federici.
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, aye, that motion carries. All right.
I, I, I'll just add that the last item that I provided um was where our budget would be, will be at the, at the end, after all of these transfers are approved and made, and you'll see that none of the departments are overdrawn um after your actions today.
Got it. So MJ, just a quick, uh, you and I talked about this last week, uh, year end projections, uh, surplus, uh, et cetera. And what we, what would, what we would need and what's our anticipated move relative to ensuring that our um our assigned fund balance or unallocated fund balance uh stays at least at the percentages that we have today?
Uh, so at the end of twenty four, our uh percent of fund balance was twelve point three percent. Um, where I stand today with these transfers, I do show a budgetary surplus of about three hundred and sixty two thousand dollars. We're at a percentage of twelve point seven six, which is um slightly higher um than F Y twenty four. Um, I am showing uh a surplus of about five hundred and forty thousand dollars overall um over on top of the twelve point three where we would need to be. Um, however, uh, not making any recommendations to move any of that money. We have not completed our audit. There may be audit adjustments that will move that number up or down. Um, sh- should there be any significant change, I'll be sure to bring that to your attention.
Thank you, MJ. Any questions or comments, MJ? Uh, just one comment, uh, you know, every year when we go to uh our bond review, our, our ratings for bond review, they always ask, where are we in terms of our uh unassigned or unallocated fund balance? And we're clearly within the range, which is ten to fifteen percent, but any growth on that is uh looked upon favorably by the rating agencies, so. All right, MJ, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you, see you this evening.
You bet.
Thanks. All right, item six, Public Works Director Dave Castro, six dot one. Doesn't take action to reward uh the crack ceiling of roads per state contract. Morning, Dave.
Morning. So we had a, we don't, we have data come through in the road.
We had, uh, we don't, we have data come through in the roads, so going off of their lists, recommended, recommended, recommended roads to, uh, to do crack sealing on. Uh, we're going to crack seal ten roads in town, and I don't know if that list got through on there. Okay, so we're going through Connecticut Seal Coating, who is on state contract, and the price would be seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and eighteen cents. For the crack sealing of the roads.
Any comments or questions? Let me, is there a motion to approve?
Some will, second.
Second, uh, any further comments? Very good. Let me try my, like a federating.
Aye.
In the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Okay, one, two. Six dot two. Doesn't take action to approve the disposal of two town vehicles.
Yes, so actually I would like to add a third vehicle to this list. We didn't anticipate getting a vehicle. Our new hook truck came in, so we want to retire the truck that it's replacing, which is GU ninety. Uh, it's a nineteen eighty-eight Mac. So we want to put that out to auction and, and sell that.
Yeah. That eighty-eight Mac is the one we bought used for hauling for a bunch of years ago, isn't it?
I don't know.
You heard rumors of those purchases?
Yes.
That never goes away.
The other vehicle would be GU one thirty-one, which is Toyota Prius. A lot of, a lot of issues with the vehicle. And that has been replaced already, as well as GU ninety-three. Uh, the new vehicle came in two weeks ago. So this is the one with the, with the frame rot that we're getting rid of, the natural resources.
The difference of, yeah. All right, um, is there a motion to approve?
Some will.
It's, um, any questions or comments? Let me try your mind, all in favor?
Aye.
Select a federating, those in the room? Those in the room as well, thank you. Uh, just one note, a couple of years ago, we had someone come talk to us about the shabby errands at the marina. Uh, if you have an opportunity, take a ride down there. Uh, I met with Dave a week and a half ago. It was on a Thursday morning. By the time I drove through that marina on Saturday, it had already started doing the work, taking the stuff out. So there is now, there are now two pollinator gardens replacing that, that sort of mess of stuff, so great job.
Thank you.
Quickly. Item seven, Janice Plazek, Department of Engineering, seven dot one, discuss to take action to approve a fall paving plan of capital fund road improvements. Good morning, Janice.
Good morning.
Yeah.
You received the list of roads that we intend to pave. We have Russell Drive, Windfall Lane, Long Hill Road in two sections, and Huckleberry Court. Long Hill Road is part of an effort with the chip ceiling that is, some sections chip sealed and other sections that are in need of pavement getting milled and overlaid. Um, there's some catch base, catch basin tops to be replaced. On the roads being paved, as well as some drainage improvements on Huckleberry and Russet that are part of this, these projects. The total being six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty cents, all based on estimates received from Tilpan with their state bid pricing. I also want to point out the drainage improvements on Huckleberry, may need to prove this separately, I'm not sure, uh, is from a proposal from Savvy and Sons per state bid. And that is to reline the culver under the road instead of doing a dig and replacement, which would be a bit of an effort, given the depth of that, that pipe uh, for the public works guys, and that cost was twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars.
I think we can handle all those in one motion, noting that what Janice just said.
Is the life expectancy of relining?
It's just as good as replacing. It's, it's a, it's, it's basically puts a pipe inside the pipe, but with, and you know, with a, a measure of lining it, and then it's like a, a concrete coating that's put on the inside of it, so.
Janice, just a quick question on Long Hill Road. I know you've noted the limits of the, where we're going to do the work. How does this relate to the longer-term project that we had talked about, uh, which basically took, took us from Hubbard Road up to New England?
So Hubbard Road to New England is a section that will only see chip ceiling this year. Uh, because we do anticipate, as part of the multi-use trail project, we're designing in road reconstruction or at least reclamation and some changes to the width of the road in order to accommodate the new trail. So we just wanted to, that's, you know, chip ceiling is going to buy us some time until we get funding and get that project ready for construction, and the road has seen somewhere. David's had his guys out there patching some of the bad areas in that section before we actually do the chip ceiling, so we'll hold up. Um, so.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty cents for the project as just described by Town Engineer Janice Plazek?
Some will.
Second, second. Further comments or questions? There are none, uh, let me call a question. Try your minds, like a federating.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. All right, seven dot two, the addition to the agenda, which is the special town meeting, and you just want to talk a little bit about why we're doing this?
Um, so as you know, we have Falcon Road in need of being repaired. The seawall is going to get replaced, roadway elevated and repaired. It's been in this state for almost three years now, I think, down to one lane. Uh, we have funding through the lotsit program. Um, the estimated cost right now is about seven million dollars for this project, being completely funded through the lotsit program, which is state funding. Um, and we're, during construction, we're obviously going to impact some of the adjacent properties, especially with regard to building the seawall and elevating the road. Um, creates some need for sloping and things like that onto, slightly onto adjacent properties. So it, it was a process going through the summer, um, meeting with the different property owners and getting their sign off for the temporary easements. And they waived their rights to compensation, um, which is a requirement that we get. Either we either pay people or we get their waiver for compensation. We, we, we don't usually compensate people for roadway improvement projects that impact their property. Yeah.
Actually, I don't think those.
So these are all temporary rights. There's nothing that's going to be a permanent right or taking on any of them.
And it expires the end of twenty twenty-six, is that what?
There's two of them that expire the end of twenty twenty-six because that was the only way I could get them to sign. I, um, we typically don't do that. But the impacts to those properties is so little on that side of the project that we can, I was hoping to be out to bid already and maybe even have bids, but it's just a process getting through the state to get authorization to bid. So I still think within the timeframe of construction season next year, whatever work needs to be done. One is just a minor little corner filling. The other one is some seawall. Part of our sea, the seawall ties into their seawall, so we'd have to make sure that work's all done by the end of next year. If the entire project isn't quite frankly done by then, which is a good possibility.
So their, their reasoning was to try to push it along a little bit?
I think so. I think they don't understand how we're not always in control of everything. Cause especially when you're dealing with outside funding and one of the gentlemen is adamantly against the project, yet begrudgingly signed these. So it's, it's, it was an effort. So sort of just, I don't know what was going to happen. I just acquiesced to the.
And Janice, if you could remind us, um, we, we had to rebuild that seawall a couple of years ago, several years ago. We've done, we've done, we've done it a couple, couple.
Oh, yeah, it's been rebuilt at least three or four times.
What, what in this design is going to protect us from those kind of repairs in the future?
So the wall that's out there now is basically a dry laid-up stone wall without a foundation. So it's, it's not intended to be a retaining wall against, you know, wave action. Uh, so what happens is when waves hit it, it just takes out, you know, the wall because it has no foundation. Uh, what we're replacing it with is a reinforced concrete seawall. That's going to be either on ledge, pinned to ledge. In some areas, the ledge is shallow enough, they'll be pinned to ledge. And in areas where it's, the ledge drops off in the middle, it's kind of like this, in, in terms of the profile of where the ledge is. We will be doing pilings down to the ledge so that the wall is tied into ledge. So it really will be resistant to the scour forces that we've seen and, and the wave impacts.
Anybody else have questions? That's a huge project.
Was there anyone who did not agree to grant an easement, or are these the only properties?
These are the only properties impacted, and they all, you know, some, we had to make some design changes for one. Um, there was some guide rail that was included in the project. They did not want to see guide rail out there, so we changed the, we extended the parapet wall to make it a stone wall and curved it so that they were happy with that. Um, obviously, our biggest impact is to the Sagem's Head Association property. Um, but, you know, they, they suffer the most from the damage that's been out there already, so they were pretty willing to sign off, and then the two Easterly properties have limited impacts. Um, were a little more suspect. I think some of the folks, the one who didn't want to sign at all, but wanted the road closed, you know, so that wasn't, you know, those were all considerations done early in the planning phase that the overwhelming decisions and impact from, input from the public was, was to keep it open.
Falcon Road?
Yes. Well, it's been down to one lane for a while here, and it's been closed in the past because of damage, so. Um, but it is considered a collector road, which is interesting because it has a.
Which is why we got the.
That's why we got the funding. It qualifies as a collector road from, from a functional classification from the DOT because of kind of it connects, you know, important neighborhoods to each other, but the volume of traffic is significantly, very low. So we've been able to, you know, get by with the one, one lane open because of the low volumes of traffic. If this was, say, Goose Lane, it would be a, you know, we wouldn't be able to do this for three years, so. With it being a collector road, so, yeah.
Any else? Thanks, Janice. All right, is there a motion to set the special town meeting for Monday, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, at eight thirty a.m.? Some will, second, second. Further comments or questions? Let me try your minds. Did you have a question, Lou, or?
No, no, just in favor of setting the meeting. Aye.
Yeah, aye, and those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, item eight, Parks and Recreation. Tony?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Tony. Thank you for patience.
Thanks for having me.
Doesn't take action on capital equipment request for the maintenance equipment for thirteen. What do we got for us, sir?
All right, so I think we have three pieces of equipment on the agenda. First one I have on the list is a, an attachment for our current, we own two vent trap tractors, uh, which take multiple attachments for different projects. This one is in addition to our seating. Um, you know, we take care of about thirty-one plus fields. Um, but we also take care of all the parks and town buildings, and most of our seating capacity comes on large loaders. So this is a, a more compact tractor with a more compact feeder. Um, it also does aeration for us. Um, so we wanted to expand our abilities in smaller areas. The second one is, is a new zero turn. We currently have four main mowers that we rotate on a regular basis, you know, nine, ten months out of the year. Um, and this would be a replacement for a tractor, I believe it was a two thousand and three. Uh, we looked at different models and we're looking at, history shows that we've been using John Deere, but we're going to try, we wanted to try a Skag this time. It's got some different, different abilities as far as like how things go. And we also made the decision to, um, I talked to the mechanics. We've had some issues over the years with the diesel engines, with all the emissions stuff that comes with it. And most of our issues over the past few years have been with the emissions. So going down to the gas is going to eliminate some of those concerns moving forward. Um, we think they're going to be, they're just as strongly built, and we think that with the amount of use that we use, it'll be okay. And the third one is a stand-on Billy Go lower. Uh, we do a lot of leave removal on the green town buildings and all of our fields and facilities. Um, currently, we use backpack blowers. We have a, uh, we used to have an old ride-on blower that we've since auctioned off. Um, we've borrowed the golf courses stand-on a few times this year for different projects, and it's been fantastic. The guys loved it. Um, it saved us a lot of time, so we wanted to expand our, uh, our machinery in that, in that sector of, of our duties.
You know, it'd be lovely to say, to share one of those for both, but you guys are using at the same time of the.
Yeah, you, yeah, it, it, yeah, exactly, for leaves, for sure, yeah. We've borrowed it a few times this year for other projects, like, you know, when we get a lot of rain throughout a week and we can't cut the field twice, we get a lot of clumping, so we have to blow it, you know, into piles and clean up and different projects like that. Aeration, when we want to blow the plugs off the field, it's nice to have. Um, so, yeah, we work closely with other departments, but it's inconvenient if it's, you know, something we need, yeah.
When you need it.
Yep.
All right, uh, thanks, Tony. All right, is there a motion to approve these three capital improvements?
I'll make a motion, Matt, but I got a question or two.
Sure, is there a second?
A second.
Uh, your question, Lou?
So Anthony, thanks for this. Um, have, have you been shopping or considering any electric equipment?
You know what? We've looked at a little bit. I, I just, me personally, I'm not confident. We've tried some weed whackers, we've tried some other stuff. The, the amount of cost for batteries, I haven't really looked into larger mowers, you know, seventy-two inch. Um, as far as I know, they don't last a full day on one charge.
No, they wouldn't.
Yeah, so that, that could be troublesome, and we go out between eight and ten hours a day, depending on our scheduling. Um, and we use those mowers primarily five days a week for our trimming. So I'm a little concerned, um, moving that direction, but it's definitely on our radar. I would like to do a little more research in the future.
Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing that research. I mean, I've seen trucks, private contractors who have literally charging racks on, on their vehicles. You're not going to get all day out of a single battery. You're not going to get an entire day out of a single tank of gas either, but, you know, on the other hand, it's easy to just dump more gasoline in. I get the convenience of that, but and batteries are extraordinarily expensive. The equipment is, I'd be interested to know what the initial equipment is. Because the trade-off, I think, is you're not dealing with internal combustion engines and the maintenance associated with them versus from time to time having to replace batteries. So honestly, we're at a point where I'd be interested to see these numbers.
Yeah, absolutely, and I will do some research on that coming up. Um, we definitely, over the next few years, have some replacements, so we'll definitely do some research on that. I think we'll have to, we'll have to outfit some of our trucks and trailers with possible, you know, possibly some, some charging options for that, but yeah, I'm a hundred percent interested in, in looking into it.
Coming in the quieter. Um, again, you're not carrying gasoline around, diesel, let alone diesel, somebody's burning a diesel. Uh, your yard equipment, I can't imagine what, what, you know, I'd be, I'd be curious what the manufacturers claim, how much is being emitted from a diesel, small diesel engine?
I, yeah, totally understand, yeah.
Everything's a trade-off.
Yep.
Can I suggest maybe this fall, when we look at the capital budget requests, if you have any equipment in, in your request, you could take a look at it?
Of course. Yeah, I actually have to review. I have to review that today for Pam, so I will definitely get some information for you.
That's great. Thank you.
And Lou, I, I would expand the, your request to Public Works as well. They've got a lot of hand tools.
Smallest, I would, I would be surprised if the small equipment's not there already for us. Not, not there meaning not ready for our use, not that we've done it yet.
All right, anything further, Tom? There are none? Uh, let me try your minds, like a federating.
In favor?
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Tony, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Despite those pointed questions, I appreciate what you're doing. Everything looks great out there, and thanks.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, Cliff, good morning. Uh, item nine, uh, Gulf School Facilities, Gulf Freedom, nine dot one, discuss and take action to award design work for the Guilford Public School Fitness Center. Good morning, Cliff.
Good morning. Thanks for having me. So, uh, yeah, we had two projects this morning discussed. The first one is the Fitness Center here, uh, which is a lower level of five ninety-five. We're looking to do really a full renovation. Really a full renovation on the fitness room and the cardio room, including upgrades to lighting, flooring, walls. If electrical is needed, we'll we'll look at that as well, as well as some soundproofing. And then we'll also be working with a couple suppliers for the actual equipment, so we'll coordinate that with the. Design team, so. We went to Silver Petroncellian Associates and got a proposal from them. They've done all the renovation work here. Both upstairs for the board of the offices as well as the original work done in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. Downstairs, so it made sense to have them come back since they know the building well in the project and have them continue doing the work here, so. We got the proposal on the on call bid list and Standing Building Committee reviewed it and made the recommendation to move forward. And award the work to Silver Petroncellian Associates for thirty four thousand five hundred dollars.
Great, thanks, Cliff. First off, is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
A second, second, second. Comments or questions?
So Cliff, explain the exact process to me, to to what we need to do to make sure there's no. Surprises at the end of the process.
So obviously, we'll work carefully with the design team to accomplish the scope of the project, which again is is to. Renovate that space and work with both P E and Jake Jarvis, who's the athletic director. To coordinate the upgrades to that space, so they're trying to make that space more user friendly for. All the sporting teams. It was originally set up. As a weight room for the football team, but now that we have a lot of athletics that are doing obviously quite well. It makes sense to make that space a little more. Friendly to the other athletics and have different equipment in there that would benefit them, such as cable equipment or different types of machines. So that if you're training for the rowing team or maybe rehabbing for, you know, lacrosse or something. You have a cable machine to use or a different type of machine that's more beneficial for those different sports. So again, we're looking at the actual equipment and then we're also looking at, you know, the flooring, the lighting, ceiling. Making sure the ventilation is adequate. And obviously electrical, so we do have a cardio room involved. There is quite a bit of existing equipment, but we are getting some new equipment, so. Some of that equipment does require dedicated power. So again, we'll look into that, establish a floor plan based upon. Working with the design teams that do this type of thing with the fitness centers and athletics. And really come up with a full plan. So again, I think we have a pretty good scope. We've been working with a couple different vendors and and design teams. On the athletic piece and equipment ahead of time so that we can merge this all together and hope do a project again. And encompass everything we need, you know, so at the end of the project, again, there's no change orders or surprises, so, yep.
Other questions? Thanks, Cliff. I had one question. I know when. This whole concept of renovating that facility came up, a lot of it was ground, you know, bottoms up input from grassroots. Folks. And is this gonna continue to be used exclusively for team stuff, or is there general student use of that facility gonna be made available as well?
General student use will be available, so that's why P E, so Regina Sullivan, who's the head of the P E. Here at Guilford High School, she's involved with the design as well, so we're trying to incorporate all the main players, so. Her staff brings over the P E classes and they do use it throughout the day as well. So we're trying to make it very. User friendly for all different activities and and school events.
Do we have a motion? I don't think we do.
I think we had.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, and Charles. Any further comments or questions, Cliff? Hearing none, let me try your minds. Selectmen Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Nine dot two, discuss and take action toward bid number one to twenty five, twenty six, GPS stormwater basin dredging.
So this project, just to bring everybody back up to speed, again, is to revitalize the pond, which is at the bottom of the hill. Just in front of the school as you make the turn to the front of the school. It has filled in over the past. Twenty plus years with various sediment and whatnot, so the goal here is to revitalize that, dredge it back out. Bring it back to its original state and allow us to have the capacity when needed to to. Keep a lot of that water on property and have it funnel off as needed appropriately, so. We did go out to bid, we had five bidders that bid on the project. And as you can see from the results, I I believe we sent you the results. We did have a little bit of a spread. Our lowest bidder was thirty five thousand and then we had two mid, we'll say. Mid priced bidders at sixty eight and seventy five, which was our original. Thought budget wise, so we were a little concerned with the low bidder, so we did have. An extensive scope review with the lowest bidder, Winthrop, to make sure he fully understands the scope of the project. And didn't miss anything, so we did that with the engineering firm, B L. Who's put together the project. We went through everything, top to bottom, whether it's trucking costs and. The actual excavation of the work and whatnot. There were no concerns. The company seems very aware of the scope and fully understands what they need to do. From start to finish to do the project, so there's no scope concerns and. From there, we actually moved over and double checked, or not even double checked, we did check the references like we normally would and both references that we did check. Came back sparkling references saying that they've done a similar project with similar pricing with this company. And they recommended them without any qualms or concerns. Both projects did not have change orders involved with the work as well, so that's a plus as well, so. The Standing Building Committee reviewed all this and made the recommendation to move forward with winter construction from Deep River, Connecticut. In the amount of thirty five thousand dollars.
Hey, is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Second.
Second. Comments or questions? It just never amazes me, or never ceases to amaze me that. Some of these bids have such a huge disparity, and we talked about this recently. You know, our contractors just throwing stupid numbers out there, and if they wind up getting it, they they get business, so. Doesn't doesn't make sense. But thank you for talking about that vetting process. That that was obviously first up on my mind, that's. You know, it's half the price of the the mid builders, the mid bidders, so anyway. Anything further, Cliff? Nope, hearing none. Let me try my, Selectmen Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Thanks, Cliff.
Thank you.
Item ten, appointments and resignations. Ten dot one, discuss and take action on the resignation of Kevin Clark. From the Planning and Zoning Commission and as a liaison, obviously as a liaison to the Land Acquisition Committee, is there a motion with appreciation and regret?
Some moved.
And second, second. Further comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try my, Selectmen Federici.
There we go. Aye.
And those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Ten dot two, discuss and take action on a recommendation to move Robert Harrington from alternate to regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Does the, is a, is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try my, Selectmen Federici.
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. Item eleven, request for use of town property. Eleven dot one, discuss and take action on request from Guilford Parks and Recreation. And the Guilford Youth and Family Services and Developmental Assets for Youth Organization to use the green for a back to school event. Early dismissal day, September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
And a second. Uh, I look forward to that one. Last year they had bubbles all over. They had a. A bubble machine and a and a bubble pool. It was all over. It was crazy. Let me try my, Selectmen Federici.
Yeah, aye.
There you go. Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries.
Do you give all the assignments?
Eleven point three.
Did I miss one?
Think so.
That's fine, I should stay on. Because I have to keep putting my password in on this. Paper in front of, paper in front of me is a little easier. Sorry, all right. Here we go, I got. All right, eleven dot three, discuss and take action to appoint Jeffrey Beckman as an alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there a motion? Oh, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, comments or questions?
I do have a question. This this seat is available due to kind of the. So did others in town, like, did the other town committees have a chance to try to fill this? Or I don't know what the composition is or how, any of that. I haven't looked at that at all, but.
I don't know, we could ask Deb if you.
I didn't know about this. I don't know how they go about doing that because. I have been curious and I have. I have been in a situation where someone that the R T C. Appointed to a commission has resigned without telling me first. So then I don't know that it's open and then have a chance to seek someone to finish it, and that's what seems to have happened here. Someone from another. D, the Democratic, right, whatever committee, has known this person is resigning, and so then. Of course, who's ever next in line as an alternate would be the person to probably. Fill that seat. I don't know if that's how that works or not. Exactly, but then I was not aware that I have the opportunity to appoint another alternate. So that that's my question, well, not my question, that's what you bring up and what. What, you know, I don't know formally.
Typically, Tracy, and again, we.
Right, oh, no, I haven't had anything new since July twenty first.
I think it's a transition, but I used to consistently get updated boards and commissioners from Tracy.
Right.
No, 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 but but we haven't since July twenty first.
Point about Tracy's.
But this one in particular is, I believe, if you look at seniority. The amongst the the alternates, that's what dictated moving it forward. And I think it was party to party, but and then placing one from the same party typically happens.
Right, right, yeah, the alternate. So the alternate appointment, I feel anyone should have had an opportunity to. To put in an alternate, but I don't know if the charter says, I don't know if that's under the charter, I, you know, I don't, I don't know the like. The rules.
It's just practice, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I do think that we should defer on that and give it, again, with the composition, maybe it's not even possible to.
And how do you get, but how do you get more people from your. R T C on there if you only have one person on there?
More people from the community at large. I mean, it seems like this has kind of been orchestrated effort where.
Right, right.
To happen at the same time. It cuts other people out, so.
I'd be happy to, uh, wait up two weeks for the R T C to have an opportunity to, is two weeks enough?
As an alternate, yeah, probably. I mean, as long as I I'm notified. I mean, if I'm not notified, then, I mean, I think a month would be better, but.
We'll give you a month. So we didn't actually put a motion on individual, right? We didn't make a motion. All right, is there a motion to take?
Some moved. Second.
Second. Try your minds on that. Selectmen Federici.
Aye, motion to table.
The room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Thanks for bringing that up. Okay, let's go back to eleven. Eleven dot two, discuss and take action on a request from the Sustainable Guilford Task Force to place a green. Assigned on the green advertising the Repair Cafe, which is now going to be November second, twenty twenty five, sign placement October eighteen, twenty twenty five. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
The second. Let me try your minds, Selectmen Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
I do need to make the note, the notice of something. The Shoreline Arts Alliance has a very unique opportunity to host a major fundraiser for. Their organization with a Guilford High School graduate and previous winner of a Shoreline Arts Alliance. Grant or scholarship, who has made it large in European Who's Got Talent. And is gonna be back here with his group, so they they were looking to do something on the first. Unfortunately, the high school performing arts center is not available cuz they're in the middle of. Building out play. The community center was the second opportunity there. So that's, that's an exciting one on the list, but what I wanted to do is. I reached out to Terry Kane, to say we'll go for task force to see if they had any ability to move their event. Off of the first because it just wouldn't work in terms of timing between setting up and breaking down both of these events. And they were able to move their event, sustainable, task force was able to move their events. Thanks to to that work. All right. And eleven dot three, discuss and take action on request for Shoreline Arts Alliance to use the community center for a fundraising event. Is there a motion?
And serve alcohol.
Yeah, yeah. So, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. Sure, we're gonna have some discussion on this.
Yes, we will. Well, so.
And a second, keep it on the table.
Okay, good. All right, now they, obviously, this is the second part of this, is they're looking to do a beer and wine reception. In the facility, so they know that we've typically not done a lot of those, that we have done some at the community center. And leaving up the folks to talk about it. But.
My inclination is to not be in favor of it just because of the Lou's favorite expression slippery slope. But we're on a slippery slope as we move these kind of one off events, and in each case, it's a, we justify it. And I think, I don't see how we can continue to do this. I think it would be better for the community if we just decided not to do this anymore. There's so many issues, and here we don't, we don't have any, anything in the packet. We don't have an application, we don't know. Who's serving the liquor, I mean, all the questions that come up, just it just exposes the town's social identity and. If they were looking to do it first at the high school, they would never get permission to serve beer and wine there, you think? I would think not. So. Uh, I I kind of agree. I I can't remember the community center versus the green in terms of these permissions. And we did have a thing about a very unique religious service that required a thimble full of wine and. That seemed to be right within the parameters, and we did have documentation on that. We had people on the screen talking to us about it. And. Years ago, when women in family life used to do men who cook and they had held it at the community center, they they always would have liked to observe beer and wine, but they never. Didn't, and that's an outside, not for profit worthy thing, but they just had to live with the fact that they couldn't do it. So that's my feeling.
Good. There you go, comments. So to your point.
You're not making any comments.
Yeah, so to your point, do we make a decision? A unilateral decision that we will allow universally with certain provisions, or are we saying no? Adding for item forever, and I'm not sure I'm at a point where I would be willing to say that.
I agree.
Because, because the Guilford Library has, since you were there.
Yes, one time for a party for donors, I came and asked the selectmen if we could serve wine after hours to a. Moderated date event. It was not open to the public and I was the grand. And there was a second.
Second, yeah.
Based on that, yeah.
And again, that was, it's typically really.
One time he had a fundraiser. And then one time he had a program with. Beer or something, where everybody got like one little tiny taste of beer or something. Yeah. I mean, I I I think it would be easiest for us to say no, never, not at all, but I think these days, I think that. To to make such a complete stand on something, I think we always need to leave the door a little bit to have a rational discussion of things. So.
Well, I can certainly go back to Eric Diller and ask for more details, have them submit more details about what they're gonna, what they wouldn't like to do. And then to to your point, an official application for that, this was, I I put this on 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 the table. As soon as possible, just to make sure they think. They can fill out their planning.
Is there any cost that preclude to different venue for that, we don't know.
Obviously, uh, the, the, the costs associated with getting renting a venue and we don't have that many venues here in town. If at all, that would support a couple hundred people, uh, in one room, uh, high school being one. All, the, the schools are really the, the opportunity to do that, um, the community center, so there's.
Well, there are, I mean, right?
Yeah. And in my opinion, when a group is making the decision whether or not to have a particular fundraiser, they look at the costs and maybe decide not to do it or do it differently or. You know.
And, and, but I think what they're trying to do is be able to consolidate it all into one place, the performance, as well as the reception, as opposed to. They know they, they're pretty sure they weren't going to be able to do it at the high school, so. Uh, let me go back to them and have them put together a more detailed application, um.
Or, or we could just give them a, a little more time to find a, a more appropriate location and, and turn it down right now.
Yeah, um, that, they've been, I think they've been through that process, uh, which is why the, uh, the high school was the first, uh, opportunity for, that they, they looked at. Uh, and in terms of renting it, that's sort of counterproductive to the goals of, uh, their, their fundraising effort and, um. So, uh, I, I'd be happy to go back to them, say, yeah, sir, you can use the, you can use the community center, uh, rent, and they had the room reserved at this point. Uh, but we're gonna make a decision, uh, based on, uh, you know, a formal application for them to do it. About the things that we always do, what are they gonna do for the secure, uh, the, the state requirements in terms of licensing and, and that kind of thing, um. Unless, unless this group thinks that the answer is just, uh, flat out no to them, uh, and they can continue to proceed with planning and having it there. Uh, but without the, uh, without alcohol.
It does seem like alcohol is the, the crux of the issue, I mean, we don't have any problem with the rest of the issue.
Right.
Oh, you said you were gonna talk to him anyway, I mean, spell that out for him, I mean.
I mean. I don't want to step on you, Charlesy.
No, that's okay.
I mean, it seems to be, they can certainly use the space, and yeah, as, as you're saying, alcohol is the issue. Um, they could pick another location where alcohol is served, um, there's nothing. You, you know, the example you gave earlier about the religious circumstance, that's the type of exception I would. Feel like it's appropriate for us to at least consider it, um, and, and, you know, who knows what the future brings, right? I don't, I don't want to have a blanket prohibition, um. But for the most part, I think most people kind of want that as a, as a space where this is not going to be what's, what's happening. Um, I, do I think it's gonna run out of control, some sort of fundraiser, probably not. But, but how much more beneficial is it to them to have this versus the sort of the slow erosion of this standard, if you will? Um, that we've had, that, that kind of keep the space, for the most part, community space alcohol-free, so. I'm, I'm sort of mildly against it, um, the alcohol, I'd be happy to let them use the space, sort of mildly against the alcohol use.
Is, uh, is that, is, is that the old running sentiment, um?
It's, I agree with that.
Susan, Susan Green.
Yeah, um, yeah, I, and, and, and really, whether we agreed with on the alcohol or not, we don't even have. A form filled, so.
Yeah, let's, you know, you have a discussion with him and something changes, I have to.
I'll, I'll let him know the sentiment is that the board would, uh, prefer not to allow him to serve alcohol, but, um, if they can give us some other information that. Might change our thinking on it, that's fine, uh, let me, let me issue a warning to all of us. Not good enough for them, but we're gonna be good enough for the next step, somebody comes and asks. And that includes Rob, Rob McCool.
Yeah.
At the, at the library. We want to be consistent, which is erring on the side of no, and without officially saying, no, we're closing the door on it. Um, that's, we, we even need to remember that. And what's, what's a criteria, what's a criteria for exceptions to of what we are establishing?
Like, we were all actually comfortable with that religious thing, so we don't want to do a blanket no, because.
And we would look at things, since we, we don't have a blank, don't have a blanket no or yes, or we're looking at each one on a case-by-case basis, we would look at things like the location. The library is different from the community center, we would look at the time of day, I mean, we don't have a form, so we don't know what the proposal is, but this is, I assume this is anything. So all those factors would be, we would have a conversation about all those things.
Okay, well, then I think it makes sense for them to give us a formal application, so that we can consider it in light of things that you just talked about.
Sure.
Does that make, does that make sense?
That makes sense.
In, informing an opinion about this, would it make any sense to get input from our insurance company?
Um, we typically require, uh, them to.
I know we require it, but what is there?
Yeah, we've got some, we can, yes, the answer is yes, we can talk to Kermit, um, you know, Kermit has approved us doing things up.
Prove anything with a dollar and cents that.
Well, no, it's not, we're not, we're not taking a ride, we're requiring, uh, people to, 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 to. Get a certificate of insurance for the, for that stuff, now. As I think about this, um. At the golf course, uh, had the unfortunate situation, we'd have been talking about beer at the, uh, annual golf course fundraiser. Okay. The distinction between a golf course and a community center can be pretty easily made, alright? Uh, most golf courses in this country, you can have a beer, uh. Maybe not all municipal ones.
Be talking about the green too. I mean, if we're, we're gonna, you know, like Troy, I mean, I can appreciate the, the slippery slope analogy, but, you know. We're gonna be consistent, you gotta be consistent.
Definitely, alright, so plan, uh, not gonna take action on the table that, uh, right, I don't think we have a motion on it. Or do we have, did we have a motion? Yeah, I think we did, we did have motion, so.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, yeah, is there, is there a motion to table?
So moved.
A second.
Second. Motion to table.
Any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds, second federici.
Aye on the motion to table.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye.
So now we asked the repair cafe to move from that Saturday to a Sunday, which probably isn't really as good for them, it's too bad.
Um, it, it was, it was not an issue for them, all of their volunteers who were doing the repairs, uh, had the flexibility in their schedule. And the volunteers from, uh, Sustainable Guilford Task Force also were, um, were available to, to, to move it. So like, the question becomes, uh, that they, they're still gonna hold that date until we make a decision.
Okay.
Um, but you may need to think about other locations.
So.
Right?
Okay.
Which one of my electronic devices is ringing? I only have four. Uh, okay, committee reports. Anything saying, um?
Um, I'm sorry, my mind's still on the alcohol. Um, no, I. I'm just trying to, uh, think, well, that, after this, we have a monthly meeting of the commission, some interesting things are coming up in front of the, on the agenda for that. Which is, um, tomorrow, I believe, um, and I'd rather wait till after.
After that, okay, that's fine.
Um, what is it?
Well, one, one thing is, uh, certainly, I know, uh, is that, uh, the, um. Town planner, as well as the selection committee for the RFP for Sawmill Road.
Right, I'm glad you're talking about it, I didn't know.
Yes, no, you're fine, you're fine.
Yeah.
Um, has decided, uh, to, uh, recast the RFP, we didn't get a, we only had a couple of respondents. So we're going to provide a little more specificity in the, in the RFP document, uh, to, 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 to ensure that, um. A lot, a lot of opportunities are gonna be looked at, not just what we had thought we were gonna be doing with that, so. There, Anne has a draft of that, which is supposed to be getting to some, we can, we'll, we'll. Alright. Okay, uh, correspondence, public work report. Um, correspondence from the Gilbert Police Alliance regards the green use. Put this on as correspondence because apropos of the conversation we started the meeting with, and, um, I quite started with, that was an extra mile. But, um, I just wanted folks to be aware that these things are being contemplated and considered, and also this is a document to get shared with the police department, so. And, and, and pushing for earlier rather than later, uh, so if there are competing interests for some of our resources, uh. We should, we should know, uh, and that's, and that's why I, I suggested this, so, um.
This.
I, I, I did not see this until, uh, that, um. Late Friday, um, the date of the event.
Gilmore date.
Exactly.
Oh, boy.
Exactly, so, um. I, I knew that they were planning on another event, but that's the Gilmore Girls weekend, so that's, uh, I, uh, I put a call in this weekend to, uh, the organizer, uh, Patricia Glindings. I did not hear back from her, uh, talking, talked about, uh, maybe they should move their. Uh, because the green is gonna be populated, there's gonna be a tent there, uh. Typically gathers around the monument in the center of the green, um, I just think it has some potential challenges to it, so.
Yeah, I, I, thank you, and she's, she's using one through fourteen, which is a lot of sections of the green.
Which is, which is not gonna be available to, probably.
Yeah, I don't remember which sections the. I know. They, they go. They, they weren't using the whole, they were using. They were using plus or two of the stores, right?
Yeah, huge tenant on that side, uh, so.
Restricted access, whereas this wouldn't be restricted.
Uh. Sometimes nothing's easy.
Yeah. You can coexist.
Very.
Yeah.
They use a different portion.
Maybe you can coexist.
They use a different portion of the green.
Gosh. Well, so we appreciate the notification, and I agree, again, I agree with your placement of it on the agenda where you put it, so.
Thank you. Uh, okay. Uh, next up, uh, was correspondence from the Veterans Advisory Committee, and the details we have, uh, the documents below. Uh, recent, uh, legislation, uh, change, uh, gave municipalities the opportunity to expand their exemption. Veterans who have a one hundred percent complete and total, you know the terminology better than I do, is, there's a, and, and there's.
Permanently and totally disabled.
Permanently totally disabled. There are some, there are some nuances to the, to the way the, the federal government actually treats a hundred percent, so. Uh, Beck, if you wouldn't mind, come on up for, for, and, and this is more informational, we probably won't act on this now, uh. Just thought the conversation, just so you understood what our, uh, options are relative to this new legislation, because. Um, in its infinite wisdom, or occasionally infinite wisdom of legislature, determined that this would be an opt-in, opt, uh, opt-out provision. As opposed to a mandate, um, which we all know, more familiar term is unfunded. This would have a financial impact, so, thank you.
Um, yeah, several options on the table, which have been highlighted in the bill, um, the Public Act twenty-five dash one sixty-eight. Um, there's, so people are kind of assuming that it's automatic, but it's not, it's up to the town, and depending on a financial impact of the town. What you guys decide is appropriate, um, two acres of land would be exemptable. If you guys, that's another local option, um. You can also sort of cap the assessment, you can do a median assessment. Um, because a, a lot of other towns have. More than us, um, assessments that are significantly higher for certain properties in the millions of dollars, kind of. That's a, a way to use a median assessment, but you also have some latitude as to what that means. Um, currently, our highest assessed value for the people on the program is four hundred and sixty-three thousand. Um.
So is that at the two acre, or is that at the total property?
That is our, that is just our, our highest assessed value that we are exempting for the, for a building at this point. Um, so, yeah, I, like, if we put in all residential properties, the median value would be three hundred and twenty-six thousand approximately, but there are variables to that. How do, what do you want to count, do you want to count, um, condos, do you want to count vacant parcels, do you want to count? You know, what do you, what do you want in there to, to arrive at that median number, if you want to cap that, um.
Just a quick point on that, um. There could be some wide range, just talked about wide range in terms of that, uh, those property values.
Correct, that's what I mean, so our highest currently is about four hundred and sixty thousand assessed value.
That's on folks who are currently on the program, like, banning the program, would it be, would we be possibly bringing in someone? Or properties that are much higher than that?
It's open to that at this point. If you're, um, one hundred percent permanently and totally disabled as determined by the, uh, VA. Um, there's, so there's another local option that you can consider, um. The service-connected unemployability, so there's, it's, it's a really complicated rating system as to how they determine what your percentage is. Currently, it's only that permanently and totally disabled at one hundred percent service-connected disability, that's it, that's all they're doing. But we have people who have a less than one hundred percent rating, say like seventy percent, but they are considered a hundred percent disabled because they are unemployed. So they're allowing you to, I think we have two people that we know of, um, who would qualify for that. But it's, uh, you know, they, they receive the hundred percent benefits because they're unemployable. So that's what they're offering in another one of these, um, you can also, um. Choose to, if you have a, if someone had a rating but died prior to October first, twenty twenty-four. Um, and they were permanently and totally disabled, you can allow the spouse to have that benefit. So there's quite a few things to consider, but. Questions?
I think what, I, I wanted to just to get to.
Yeah.
And what I think we'll do is, um, have Becky work and probably with Pete, uh, to lay out the options, you know, this is, we've got some documents here, which are. You know, the, the legislative, uh, speak, something in, in English giving us the, the options would be something I think we want to go to, um. The, uh, the reality is we don't have to do or make this decision immediately, uh, but we probably should within a reasonable timeline. Uh, because that will affect, uh, her grant list, uh, which is closer than, uh.
We're gonna blink and it's gonna be here.
Other piece of this, that it does not take effect until the tax bill that comes out, uh, July one, twenty twenty-six. So it's not as if somebody's going to retroactively, uh, participate in this program. It is, uh, it is, it is in the tax year after, uh, the twenty twenty-five, uh, grant list is composed, so.
Maybe a silly question, but in your table, the, the last row, TDIU.
It's totally disabled due to individual unemployability, TDIU, that's the, that's the less than a hundred percent, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, so that's not the total of anything, that's another row.
That's another piece, that's, you can add that piece, so the first piece is, um, the land, the first, the, the initial row is what we have now. When you see twenty twenty-five, that adds the land, and when you see the, the, the other pieces, that TDIU, the local option for that.
So the way it works now, the house is on two acres of land and the exemption is only on the one piece.
On the dwelling, on the dwelling, not even like a land.
Not on the land, so, so it is the rest, it's all the residents, but we split up the.
The rest of it, no.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, no outbuildings, no, and this is just for the land, it's not gonna be everything.
I didn't realize that, I assumed it was the entire parcel.
I mean, you can't have a house without the land.
Yeah, yeah, I I thought that was how it worked.
It was, the way they wrote the statute was problematic at best, it's been revised, I think, three or four times already, so.
So how many people does the twenty twenty-four figure represent? How many individual?
I believe it was around twenty-one, I think we have twenty-five people. Um who would be, uh we had a couple more who are eligible as the statute stands for twenty twenty-five. Um but there would, you know, but you can see, I believe the TDIU is two more people.
Any other questions? Sure, there'll be more.
This is really.
Again, I think the distinction, the distinction here is if this is recognition of folks who have given. Services to their country, uh um you know, my original inclination was, yeah, why wouldn't we do it? But uh there are some financial impacts that are are shared by the balance of the community, although they don't seem to be uh as significant, um. Um by adding and adding in this layer, that's it's the, it's the stuff that we're already doing, that's. Becky, thank you. Um if folks have specific uh information they want or need to try to make this decision. Um please don't hesitate to reach out to uh to Becky, happy everyone.
Yes, we 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 are trying to work with the advisory committee to explain it to the veterans. Cause there's been a lot of miscommunication with the legislature and all that kind of stuff, just to, so if anybody, yes, if anybody has a question, I told Fred to have them call us.
Thanks, Becky.
Thank you.
Old business? New business? Public forum?
Uh so it's voting time coming up, this pains me to say this, it really does. But as I drove down to church on Sunday, I saw Guilford Fair signs on telephone poles, on stop signs. Throughout the town, and I know that this is a no-no, and I think we need to have consistency, but it really pains me to say this. I know it's hard for them, they would have to figure out how they would put directional signs and signs for the fair, but. You know, I just felt, I it also needed to remind all those who would participate in having. Uh signs for candidates that it's, it's not legal, right, to put it up on telephone poles, signs on telephone, okay.
Just in terms of wayfinding signs for the fair, I would, those, I I don't, I'm not sure you're objecting to the way for the wayfinding signs. Arrows to how to get there most effectively, that's more of a public safety issue, but putting them, I don't think they're putting, are they putting them on telephone poles, you know?
CVS, right at the stop sign at CVS, they're, you know, I maybe they are directional, but they're still signs.
But if they're directional, it has a public safety component to it.
Okay, then I'm glad, I'm glad that you can have an exception for that.
Oh, on telephone poles, that's a little thing.
I I I, I don't know, I don't know that it is in law except that uh I would, I would think that the the owners of those. Not resist. For the for the purpose. It's up to, and the other thing is. We can make it's up to us, um if you don't think they belong on telephone poles. Um that's something I'd like, I'd be interested in in hearing.
We'll uh we'll have a conversation with the Hax Society about actually relocating some of those.
That's all we need.
Some wooden stakes or um putting on, certainly if they're on stop signs or telephone poles in areas where maybe they're affecting line of sight. Certainly, we wanna keep it consistent.
Got it, thank you. Um I look forward to that meeting, uh or missing it. Uh alright, anything else in public forum? Thanks, Deb, and Debby, uh please give me a call. Okay, uh item seventeen, executive session, discuss ongoing contract negotiations, police management team. Uh an executive session will be required, uh is there a motion to go into executive session for those purposes?
Second.
And a second, uh I'll be inviting Mitch and and then.
Also Chris Hudson. Not on the line yet, I don't know if it's a, uh uh he, just make make him available to come in if you can.
Okay. Uh alright, Christie, thank you for joining us today. Uh same thing for Jen Ash, Paula, Mary Jane, Becky. See.
I'm gonna follow Matt.
You're out, okay.
Uh just, you know, uh Attorney Hudson is in a mediation arbitration right now. You know, the community only says it's with the mediator now, so. When we thought this might happen nine thirty, we thought it was gonna be good, but now that we're ten thirty, we're not, that's really good with them.
Okay.
But text me back, I said, I'm letting you know we're going into session now.
Well, you want me to stay in since Chris isn't handy?
Yeah, probably be helpful.
Okay.
So the management team has been getting together. Um because the last time we met with the police officers, they were.
It looks like the recording is still running.
Oh, it is. Thanks, Will.
Sure, advantage of being on the screen here.
Uh Chris says he's gonna join.
Uh is there a motion that's come out of executive session? Let me try your minds, Second Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, uh motion carries, uh in executive session, there are no motions made, no actions taken. Uh so with nothing left on our agenda, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So.
And a second.
Second.
Uh voice vote from all, aye, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.